For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color art, honor your colors. Color art, honor your colors. Color retreat.
Father, we thank you for our Girl Scouts and for them honoring the colors. We want to thank you for our country and the holiday that's coming up this next weekend that honors our patriots and our soldiers that have fought over the years for the freedom of this country. And we just ask that you continue to bless this country and guide us in your way. Father, we just ask also tonight that you be with the folks in Moore, Oklahoma as they recover and as they rebuild. And we just ask that you be with the families and the people there as they gather their life back together. We just pray for a blessing upon them. We pray for a blessing tonight, Father, as you be with this council as they discuss the business of Guthrie, Oklahoma. We want to thank you for our town. What a great place to live. And we just thank you for the blessings that we receive. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let me sing it, please. Guthrie Public Works Authority is called to order. We have a consent agenda items A and B. Recommend that we approve both items. I need a motion in a second, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider the consent agenda, A and B.
I'll second.
Somebody else? I have a motion in a second. Council, just cast your votes, please.
Chairman, all the votes are in.
Show us the votes, please. Passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Guthrie Public Works Authority is adjourned. I call the city council to order. We have a consent agenda items A through H. I need a motion in a second to approve those, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda from A through H.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Council, please display your or cast your votes.
Can I interject just real quick?
Yes, sir.
On tonight, we're making a motion to appoint some folks to our local boards. I always think it's important to recognize our appreciation for having those folks get on the boards and volunteer their time. It's always an important aspect for any city and any type of function for, you know, just to want to make a point, just to bring it out, that we appreciate those volunteers out there. Thank you.
That's true. Thank you, Trey. Appreciate that. All right. Cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in.
Show us the vote, please. Passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Now I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Sure. Looking at item number three is to consider approval of resolution 2013-05 supporting the Cottonwood Bridge project by the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. The Cottonwood Bridge, otherwise known as the Viaduct, was constructed in 1937. It has served Logan County well for almost 80 years. However, after many repairs and inspections by ODOT, they have determined that it is now structurally deficient. The bridge is the primary east and west thoroughfare through Guthrie connecting the main body of town with Mercy Hospital. When flooding occurs, roadway closes, making the west end impassable and cuts the town in two. ODOT has done in-depth studies on solutions to the bridge problem and determined that a new bridge is near the existing location is required. The proposed design calls for a four-lane bridge with sidewalks on each side. The project area will extend from First Street just to beyond 11th Street. The center line of the new bridge will sit about 25 feet south of the current center line. ODOT will contact all affected landowners and work directly with them. The cost for the project is currently estimated at $16 million. Construction is expected to begin in 2014. ODOT will host another town hall meeting in September to address all public questions. And ODOT has requested this resolution of support from the Guthrie City Council in an effort to build the new viaduct. I ask, I recommend that we pass resolution 2013-5.
So moved. Second.
Council, display your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in.
Show us the vote, please. Thank you. Item three passes unanimously. City manager, number four.
Number four item seems redundant, but our first motion was to support the project. The second is talk about the design. This is to consider approval of resolution 2013-06 supporting the road design of the new Cottonwood Bridge to include four traffic lanes and sidewalks on each side. The current Cottonwood Bridge is deteriorating, as I just said. Current average daily traffic volume is 12,860. We anticipate a future count of 16,270 vehicles per day. Based on ODOT's analysis, that would require a four-lane bridge. It wouldn't be logical to use funds to construct a two-lane bridge that's designed to last the next 75 years. The 2002 Guthrie Comprehensive Plan identified the viaduct as needing to be replaced. They mentioned in the plan that the bridge would be a two-lane bridge. The current analysis by ODOT shows a four-lane bridge would best serve the interest of Guthrie and Logan County. ODOT requests that the Guthrie City Council support this resolution reflecting the need to expand the bridge to four lanes to traffic with dual sidewalks in an effort to accommodate future capacity. Staff recommends the passing of resolution 2013-6.
So moved. I'll second.
Council, show your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in.
Show us the votes. Thank you. Number four passes unanimously. City manager, number five.
Number five is to approve resolution 2013-7 supporting lowering the speed limit to 45 miles per hour on West Noble Avenue from Academy Road to Commerce Boulevard. The street committee met on March 27, 2013, unanimously passed the request to lower the speed limit from 55 to 45. Currently, we're seeing an increase of traffic along that area with businesses expanding. The egress and ingress off of Academy and Commerce have grown in their capacity of vehicles. That is where our Public Works location is. We do see quite a few semis in our area currently, and it's a very, very dangerous part of West Noble. ODOT does require a resolution in an effort to make a request for them to change a speed limit. The city staff recommends approval of resolution 2013-7.
Council, I need a motion in a second, please.
I make a motion that we accept that.
Second.
Council, cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in.
Show us the votes, please. Number four, number five passes unanimously. Thank you, council. City manager, number six.
This is to consider approval. The City of Guthrie's vote for two trustees to the Board of Trustees for Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group for a three-year term, commencing July 1, 2013. On March 5, 2013, the city council nominated Councilmember Zee Thomas to be placed on the ballot. His name has now appeared on a ballot across the state of Oklahoma. Staff recommends that, one, that we do vote for our very own after our nomination. I would interject, as I look at those running, my only experience is Rocky Rogers, the city manager of City of Sand Springs, has taken me a little bit under wing, so I would place his name up for y'all to consider. You have the opportunity to vote for two individuals for the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Board. So I'm seeking the other name, or hopefully Zee's name, in an effort to vote for those two trustees to serve on that board.
I move that we nominate Mr. Rogers and Mr. Thomas to the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group.
I'll second.
Any discussion on?
I might add as well, and sentiments of the city manager. I know Rocky as well, and he's a super-duper guy, and I think he'll do a great job in that role, so.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Council, cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in.
Show us the votes, please. All right. Passes unanimously for Rocky and Zee. Thank you, council. City manager, number seven.
This is to consider approval amending section I assignment subletting of the Territorial Squares Square Dance Club lease agreement for use of the building, commonly known as the Girl Scout Cabin. In your packet, you'll see an addendum to the contract. Myself and Councilmember Thomas and Vice Mayor Wood went out to visit with Territorial Squares, and I want to allow the opportunity to have events in a moment to have a word and speak. When we went out there, we did look at the property, and as y'all can remember from previous council members and for the new ones on council, the situation is that there's an individual family living in that facility, which is not in accordance to the current contract. We've proposed an addendum to that contract, which would say that the leasing would adhere to the City Property Maintenance Code. They'll take care of the property as they currently do. That in the future, the city would have the right to do a background check for any tenants. And recently, they have offered to place gravel on the roadway that leads from the territorial Girl Scout Cabin, if I may, Girl Scout Cabin to Pine. And that's a lengthy downsloping, what appears to be dirt road right now, that location is. So it's the back of Highland Park. Without the tenants there, we have experienced in the past vandalism, et cetera, so the city does have an interest in someone being in that area. I have not placed a dollar amount to it. We have basically said that they will adhere, and we can go in and check it, and we will check back, do background checks as well, if I can. I wouldn't mind for Vince to come say a few words.
Yeah. Vince?
What do you mean?
Please, sir. Vince Wilson of the Territorial Squares.
My name is Vince Wilson. I'm a resident of Edmond, and I'm currently, my wife and I are currently president of Territorial Squares Square Dance Club here in Guthrie. I stand before you here to thank you for all of the work. I know that you guys have put hours and hours into these amendments, and council members have met us there to work out this amendment, these amendments. And as you know, Territorial Squares has been a part of Guthrie at that location for many years. We have danced there years and years, and with, we hope that these amendments will be passed, will be accepted, so that we can continue to be a part of the community for many years to come. If anybody has any questions of me?
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Call in questions. I'm finished.
Any questions on from the council? Any concerns?
I have some concerns. So, not necessarily questions yet, but one is I'm still concerned, and one of the reasons I brought this up was, not only was this a problem with the subleasing and the language, is that is $150 a year. And I want to just emphasize, a year. It gets confusing because it's hard to believe one year. But I really think I would like to amend this to $150 a month. Basically, they sublease this to someone else who ends up paying the rent. That would be $150 a month, and then they pass it on to us, and that's how they have been doing it. I think it should be $150 a month, because the insurance that we have to pay, they have insurance, but we have insurance, is around $700 a year. So we're paying them to use this property. We should not be doing that. It's a big property. Did we ever find the square feet for the leasing? It's bigger than I thought it was. Do we know? Do we have a guesstimate?
Mm-mm.
I think it's at least 800 square feet.
Eight hundred. I'd ballpark eight hundred.
For 150 a month, that's still cheap, and this would be, require them still to do upkeep of the place, still be cheap. I mean, a lot of people would kill for $150 a month rent for that size of a facility. It is only air units or wall units, so it's not centrally in air. That does make it cheaper. But I think 150 a month is a nice, inexpensive place for somebody to stay. The other thing I have is that I'm worried that this is an exclusive contract. So this is a contract with the square dancers, who only use it between two and three days a month, which is great. However, I know the Girl Scouts, I think Trey mentioned, the Girl Scouts had approached us. They were interested in also having some use for meetings there. So I'm a little worried making an exclusive contract, because we're making it so this facility can be only used by one group for two to three days a month, and we have to pay them to do this, basically, because we're paying the insurance. We have money that we have to pay for, that we have to upkeep, and to me, it's just not worth doing this. And this is a five-year contract. This is not a yearly contract. So those are some of the things I'm worried about.
I have a question. How large is the area that is certainly currently subleased? That they're actually living?
Around 800 square feet.
Okay. So how large is the building itself?
I'm guessing it's?
Two thousand, three thousand. I mean, it's a large, open space.
The dance hall area is very, very long. It's long and?
Right. I knew it was long and narrow.
Narrow.
Narrow, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
And what I'm worried about, too, is that we are being renters. But if we're going to be renters and lose money, to me, that's an even bigger concern. It's, in a way, we're being a renter, at least an indirect renter.
Are the renters paying rent? I mean, the people in the apartment, they're not paying rent?
They're utilities. They mow the front. They have to keep the yard around the front out there. They watch out for the place, make sure that, so, here in the building.
We need them to come up. Or one spokesperson. One spokesperson.
If we can get one spokesman, if somebody wants to come up to the front, please? If anybody?
Welcome back, Vince.
Thanks, Vince.
Let me make sure I understand the question. The person, the family we have living there does not pay us like any set amount of rent. The deal is, it is a trade. They mow the grass, they pick up the trash, and they keep an eye on the place. In exchange, they pay the utility bills, the gas, the electric, and the water. That is the trade we have with them.
So can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Vince, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So in our informal discussions, we talked about how you would try to always keep somebody there for security reasons.
Yes, sir.
And then I asked you, if we charged a little more to cover our costs, would that keep you from subleasing? That you'd pass that money through to us, I assume?
That is what we've decided we would have to do. Yes, sir. We would pass it right on to the family living there.
So that could be, that's easily doable?
That's doable. They would not kill us.
Definitely, definitely. Because it's not going to charge, hurt you one way or another. So, okay.
Great. Thank you, Vince. All right. Council, you've heard the discussion. I need a motion in a second on this.
I want to kind of clarify something real quick. Also, I'm a little worried about it being exclusive. They're not using the full capacity of this, and we're making an exclusive contract for five years, or four years, I guess. It's continued until 2017. What do you guys think about allowing other groups, like, let's say, the Girl Scouts, just to meet there maybe once or twice a month? I mean, it's actually called the Girl Scout Building, you know, because they used to meet there at one point. Just a thought. It just seems to me odd that we make it exclusive for that type of setup.
Randall, I may ask you, we're already in an exclusive contract, so I don't know if we can do both.
No, I mean, we, at this point through 2017, they?
They have it exclusively.
And then we're making some amendments to the existing lease that runs through 2017.
So we're pretty much stuck with all we've got until this is over with on the?
Well, unless you make an amendment, which?
Unless we agree to, both parties agree.
That both of them.
One amendment would be the 150 a month instead of the year, and then we can at least talk about that. But I wouldn't mind, maybe, I don't know, maybe we should vote on that first, and we can discuss the other thing. You vote for it, against, something like that.
What are you asking for? Are you asking the amendment for $150 tonight?
The first amendment I have is for 150 a year. Or a month, sorry, a month.
That's not this amendment, though.
No, my amendment is to amend this amendment. That's what I'm saying. Because if we pass this amendment, it's exactly the same problem I had before. This does not fix the problem whatsoever. 150 a year, I mean, we're going to have to pay what?
Then you need to make that motion.
Well, I move that we make amendment to this amendment that they pay $150 a month rather than 150 a year.
We can move our amendments all we want. If they don't agree to the amendment, there is no amendment. I agree.
There's a motion.
Have they been asked?
I mean, has a consideration been made?
Hold on, maybe.
They don't want to do that.
I do. You seem to be okay with that.
Yes.
You seem, because like, at least we're not losing money.
Councilman Wood, do I understand?
Yes. Please, sir.
Councilman Wood, I understand in our informal conversations, when we talked about the $150 increase, that was per occupied month, when we actually had a tenant in that little apartment?
Of course, yes.
Okay.
I assume, I guess it's a slight, because this is 150, is this assume occupation?
The 150 in the current contract, the current contract doesn't address occupation at all. So it's 150 a month, I mean, 150 a year, excuse me, regardless of occupancy. So we didn't, you would have to put that in your amendment.
So Randall, do you have advice on this? Versus occupied versus?
I think we talked about this in one of the workshops. If you want to assess a rent to the tenant, so when it's occupied by a tenant, you can write it that way. If there is a tenant caretaker in there, they will pay X amount of money a month. Again, the Square Dance Club has to agree to that amendment.
You more into the?
We can.
I think that makes more sense.
I think Randall's got the right ideas. It basically is $150 a year and $150 occupied month, is what you're saying, right?
We're quite happy with the $150 a year.
Well, my concern, either way, I want to cover our insurance on our side. So it really should be at least 700 a year, or $150 a month if it's occupied. If that makes sense.
I think we need to address the part of the lease that's being gone around. They're subletting illegally right now. That's the part we need to address, is how to address that. I don't really want to mess with the rest of it.
Well, I mean, that's here. I'm just adding an amendment. I mean, adding, like, number four would be number four, that would be a month versus a year. So I'm adding to this amendment, because I think by itself does not fix the problem I've had when I brought this up. Six months ago. And we're losing money. And I think the square dancers are great, and I think they're doing great stuff, and it's a great activity, and it's a community activity. But we should at least, if we're going to do that, at least have them pay for our insurance so we're not losing money. In effect, we're paying for them to be there. We should at least cover insurance, at the very least, a year.
I've got a question. They're going to put down gravel, is that correct?
Yes.
What's this going to run? I mean, what's this going to cost then? Three, $4,000, $2,000?
$400 a truckload, is that what he told us? $300 a truckload?
And how many, how many truckloads?
Minimum of two. Just to get us to the, from the parking lot to the curve, would be a minimum of two truckloads. And that doesn't go all the way through the street.
So that's 800.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, to go all the way through the street.
Improvements.
When the city's actually going to do labor, right? Correct there?
The ditches. But not the application. We're not doing the application, just the ditch work.
How much money is our ditches?
Oh, crew of two, eight hours, maybe, maxing. I'd have to do that ditch work.
What kind of money are we talking about?
The ditch work for the drainage.
Drainage.
We're going to have to fix the drainage.
Yeah, we need the drainage. We're washing that gravel.
We're going to have to fix it later.
Nah.
What kind of money are we talking about in labor, though? Is that what you need?
A four-man crew, 30 times four, 120 bucks.
So, and you're already going to have to fix it anyway. I mean, either we put the gravel down, or they're going to put the gravel down. And I just, I would rather them do it, and then us do the other stuff and just leave it as is for now. And that's something you can, we can address that at a later time.
All right. Thank you, Vince.
Appreciate that, councilman. Thank you.
But if we don't make this amendment, that we're in a five-year contract with them for 150 a year, that doesn't cover, this is multiple years.
But we're in that agreement, as we sit here tonight. If we don't do anything on anything else tonight, that agreement's there for the next four years.
Sure. I'm just adding the amendment, though, and I think that's an important one. Otherwise, I'm going to bring it up later, because it's still not fixing the problem. Otherwise, we didn't fix anything other than, yeah, they're not supposed to be subleasing.
We made the agreement with that, but the part that's the problem is that they have a sublease going on that's not within the thing. We need to fix that.
I think we need to fix the sublease first, and then we go at it from there.
So what does that mean? Does it mean another meeting?
The sublease is addressed in this amendment. This addresses that.
No, I get that. I get that. So we pass this, great. But I don't want to forget how we're losing money on this deal. Are we saying next meeting?
2017, when the? 2017, when you're going to look at it.
So we're going to lose money for four years just because we don't want to deal with that issue?
Because we made that agreement.
Yeah, but they broke the lease. We're renegotiating because we had over, we didn't have the oversight to, this was a deal that was made years ago. It was a sweetheart deal years ago, and we're just going to continue that. Why don't we just, at least, let's say 700 a year to cover insurance? Let's just cover insurance. It's a zero gain.
You've had a motion on the table.
Yeah, we've had a motion on the table to do that.
Which one are you saying is official?
There was a motion on the table for 150 a month.
150 a month, okay.
So that's the current motion on the table.
It's not been a second to that motion.
I haven't heard a second.
I've not heard a second on that motion.
There's the amendment.
Second. He said second.
Second, right. I have a motion in a second to amend it as stated and then do 150 a month per rented month, or for occupied month, to be added on there as a number four to this amendment. All right. I have a motion in a second. Council, cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in.
Show us the votes, please.
Trey, what are you?
Trey, you both go both ways.
No, I promised I didn't, but I voted no.
All right. Four, three. Four, three, the motion carries to include the $150 per month change also. Thank you.
Per occupied?
Per occupied month.
That's tenant occupied. I guess we better specify tenant occupied.
Tenant occupied.
Subtenant occupied, because they are our tenants.
Not them.
They're our tenants, so it'd be subtenant.
All right. Thank you, council. All right. City managers report.
Hold on to your hat. It's long.
I think they understood it all.
Save the date for June 21st. For all city council members, we've reserved for a council retreat. Reserve it from 9:00 to 5:00, if you can. If you have conflict, please let me know, June 21st. We're excited to announce that the city is a beneficiary of $8,000 from the Oklahoma Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust in an effort to provide bike racks downtown and paint paint for lanes. Special thanks to Courtney Thompson at Get Fit Guthrie for making that happen. The city is hosting the space in the council chambers for a public forum for the Complete Streets Workshop, that will be Friday night at 6:00 PM here at Council Chambers. I want to do a special thanks to Jim Duncan with Benchmark Financial, and James Long with Energy Force of Guthrie. They became our first two developer sponsors of GTV20. They will receive promotional spots four times a day on our channel, and have a segment during the city manager's forum, so we look for more sponsorships, but special thanks to Energy Force and Benchmark Financial. Wanted to let you all know, there are three new homes that are being built in Mission Hills, approximately 1,800 square feet. I had the opportunity to meet with the builder, Brandon, today with Brighton Fine Homes, and we're excited to have them in our community. Those homes will be approximately 1,800 square feet. They include three bedrooms and a study, or four bedrooms, plus a great room and a covered patio. They also feature a courtyard in the entrance. We're thrilled to have those beautiful homes being built. Friendly reminder to our citizens, this is the time to mow, as soon as it dries up. We are watching and experiencing heavy growth around the area, and Suzie and I, from the animal shelter, had the opportunity yesterday to chase a skunk through the neighborhood. She wanted to know what I was going to do when I catch the skunk. I have no idea what I was going to do, but we did notice that there were yards that would make a great habitat for such critters. And I'm looking at my neighbor, but it was not your yard, Don, I remember. But I was poking around his fence, and I had to call him and make sure I didn't get shot back there. We were chasing a skunk. Update, I wanted to give you all on the hotel, motel funds for park improvements. In the past few months, you all passed some improvements. We have replaced Highland Park Tennis Courts' practice boards, we replaced the Highland Park crawl tube, all parks' seats and swings have been repaired or replaced. We've upgraded the Mineral Wells horseshoe pits, if you so enjoy that game, I'd be happy to go play you in horseshoe. We replaced the split railing fence at Mineral Wells, completed installation and repairs to the Highland Park trail lights, repaired all the Highland Park water fountains, and the parking lot at Highland Park will begin in the next few weeks, as weather being cooperative. So special thanks to the parks crew, their dedication, and our voters in approving a hotel tax to be used for such funds. I know it's heavy on our hearts, but as a city manager, and as I've reached out to other city managers across the state, our prayers and thoughts are with others in the state. I want to give a special thank you to our emergency responders, we sent in between 15 to 20 responders that probably saw some pretty horrific things. So I'm very thankful for the public safety crews that serve the city of Guthrie, and their ability to respond at a drop of a hat to help others in need. So we're very thankful for who we have here, and our prayers go out to all of Oklahoma. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from members of the city council? Zee, please.
First, I would like to second what she just said, because I know that that was not pleasant, and what they had to do, and appreciate what they did, and what's going on, and our hearts, our hearts are, you know, it's hard to put it into words what's going on. Other than that, I am excited about something going on on the west side with the neighborhood group that's going on over there. Looking forward to seeing Chuck Lamb and his group getting some things done and cleaned up over there, and they're pretty excited about doing some things, so look forward to hearing more from that group in the near future.
Well, we do have a really good community, because I heard this morning that the high school students had three full buses of goods that went down to Oklahoma City this morning to the victims, so that's, speaks volumes. And they had lots of money, there was just money coming into the office today, people were just, we had thousands of dollars of checks coming into our office trying to get to the Red Cross. So our community is definitely supporting everything and backing up everything that's going on down there. One thing that Don Reepie's Church is doing is, they are actually, they have a semi at their church sitting right now, and it's getting stocked up for, to take delivery down there on Friday, it'll be there for the next two days, Wednesday and Thursday, and they are taking the five items that they need the most, which is the water, the Gatorade, they don't want any soda, gloves, trash bags, and diapers. And they're going to load the truck up and take it down on Friday. They're going to take it down to the Draper Park Christian Church, which is their, it's a sister church of theirs, and it happens to be real close to where everything's going on. So we encourage everybody to, 1802 West Logan is their, excuse me, the church's address. They're going to be there all day tomorrow and all day Thursday, so anytime you'd like, try to keep it in between 8:00 and 5:00, I'm sure they'd like to go home at some point in time.
It's from 9:00 to 6:00.
9:00 to 6:00.
9:00 to 7:00.
9:00 to 7:00, okay. 9:00 to 7:00, Wednesday and Thursday. And, because we do have people calling us as well, wanting to know where they can take items, so that's a great thing to get, have a semi truck to be able to take down there. On a lighter note, Byron Berlin's going to have a show this weekend, this Saturday. Next week, June 1st, on a Saturday, there's going to be a fundraiser for God's Food Bank. It's called Jump Back Jack, they're going to have hamburgers, and then they're going to do homemade ice cream from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Presbyterian Church. So we hope you guys can support that as well, and hope you all have a good weekend. Thank you.
John?
You know, again, everyone's saying this, but, you know, thanks for the 15 to 20 emergency folks, our civil servants from the city, fire and police, and to do all the, what they've done, and on the city level, Red Cross, and different community groups, such as Don Reepie's Church, to really give and help these people and more. I know my sister-in-law had damage in her house, and thank goodness, nothing happened otherwise, but they had the fence found in their bedroom, so, you know, there's some, definitely some damage. I had some students actually had some major damage at their houses, so. And I want to know, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you are leaving town, and you're worried about, let's say, a couple of weeks, you can notify the city, I think, notify Renee's office, code enforcement, that you'll be out of town, is that true? Is that not true? To tell them, hey, we're, you can't tell?
PD.
For grass, for grass. PD.
No, for grass, no, that's not it.
No.
Well, for other things, you could say, hey, I'm going to be out of town, let the city know that you're going to be out of town for a couple of weeks?
I apologize, I haven't heard that.
Haven't heard that either.
I don't know what we would do.
Okay. Well, I mean, for example, say your grass is a little higher than usual...
Give them a reprieve.
Well, just because you notify, if you don't notify them, it's on you, but if you notify the city...
I haven't heard of it.
No?
I'm sorry.
I was thinking Matt said that that's something that they did. It's not like you can do all the time, but just something to think about. Okay. That's all I have.
Cheryl?
Yes. I want to echo everything that's been said so far. I couldn't be more proud of my state and my community, the civic people that have really responded, the first responders. Oh my gosh, what a chore. But God bless the people of Oklahoma, our community, and the people of Moore.
Yeah, same thing. After watching it last night on TV for a couple of hours, I finally just had to turn it off. Really depressing, but at the same time, it's great to see people from Oklahoma jump in with both feet, and I do know about the school buses, my daughter was up this morning, and she went in, and she said it was really fun to have kids come up and know where this is, where this is going to go, to stand and help them out, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, again, just quickly, I want to address all the volunteers, just one more time, we can't have enough volunteers to help with the city. I think it's so important to be civically minded, and I appreciate everyone that's volunteering, and for the various boards that we have. And once again, I echo the sentiments that are here tonight.